Okay, all right. Thank you, Eric. I'm gonna call to order the Town of Andover Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting for Monday, September 9th. We're gonna get started at 7:02 PM. And our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the which it stands, one nation, under God. All right, thank you very much. One second. Okay, and I know we have a big crowd today. I'm gonna make this announcement at the beginning of this meeting. I know we have resignation Paula King from the board. I do not intend to appoint anyone at this meeting. This is our first meeting. It's only been, you know, twenty some odd days since she submitted the resignation. We're going to continue to take applications and we will sit there and have a more robust discussion next meeting, allow everyone who put their their name in to give a five-minute overview or whatever they choose to do. And we will vote on the replacement at our next meeting. So I'm just making everyone aware of that before we get started so that we don't have any confusion. Right? So now we're gonna move on to it's public speak really should be first. So we're gonna move to public speak. Number three, and we're gonna start with Kathy and Mike Palazzi.
Good evening. I submitted my last Board of Selectmen report on transportation for this meeting. And I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for their past support greatly appreciated all these years. The seniors had their first cheer yogurt today, and it was an excellent turnout. Our teacher is local, and she's extremely knowledgeable and told us all the things we were doing wrong and all the things we could improve on. So it was really a fun day. So I also wanted to say that while people in general have commented on how lovely the new building is, the top question seems to be, will there be an electronic door opener from the outside door to get in? It seems that their complaint was as difficult for the seniors using walkers and those with canes. Understanding was all municipal buildings had to be ADA accessible. That's the American with Disability Act. And the law states that local governments new build or when you're altering any facility, they must make them accessible for any disabled individual. So perhaps you can think about that. I mean, then maybe there was no money or something. The other thing is that we received complaints about today about residential noise level with regards to decimals. Too loud for neighbors and the exposure to eighty-five decimal points is supposed to be considered damaging to human hearing. And any noise exceeding seventy decimal points considered disturbing for neighborhood. So the perhaps the Board of Selectmen might consider this information to help seniors in the future. I think that the question is is this particular strategy, and I do hope that I have the opportunity to speak to Eric on this because I think he's aware of this, and I do believe that the senior can be appeased with just a simple phone call. The other thing is oh, the seniors have met and they would like the Board of Selectmen to consider assigning Anne Creme as our liaison since Paula was our liaison and has resigned. And lastly, the Andover Republican Town Committee have endorsed Stephen King to be the new representative on the Board of Selectmen replacing Paula King. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mike, just checking. You got anything?
No.
Mike, that's perfect. Thank you. Rachel Bowman?
Yes.
Do you have anything for public speak?
No, I do not.
Okay, Steve Willard?
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. I'm just just wanted to, I don't know if this is the the time yet or it's gonna be the next meeting. I just wanted to endorse Joe Godwin for appointment to the Board of Selectmen. I've known him for a while yet and he's got kids in the school, wife works at the school, and he's seems like he'd probably be the next best fit.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Dave Hewitt?
No, Jeff, I don't have any comment at this time.
Okay. Joe Godwin?
Yep. Good evening, everybody. Joe Godwin, Board of Selectmen. Thank you. Just want to
And Joe, just so we know, like, if you're gonna give a speech for the position, let's do it next week. If you just have
Absolutely, absolutely. That's not what this is gonna be. Just a quick introduction to who I am and you know, ask people, you know, this is an appointment and I and I understand the the gravity with that. So if people want to reach out to me between now and that meeting, you know, feel free to do that. My cell phone number and email should be in the the packet. So that's all. Thank you.
All right, Joe. Appreciate it. Thank you. Stephen? Oh, Stephen King, I'm sorry.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank the ARTC for the endorsement. Really, I greatly appreciate that. Greatly appreciate the opportunity. Like to point out that the optics really don't look good when somebody steps up as an unaffiliated candidate. Unaffiliated is not a party. Okay? I'd like to just remind everybody that we have minority rules that need to be adhered to. And I hope everybody understands that unaffiliated is definitely not a party. So thank you again. I appreciate it. My contact information is available again in the packet, and if anybody wants to contact me, please feel free to do so. And I look forward to working with the team in the future.
All right, thank you. Linda Fish?
All set.
Susan Camara?
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want to bring briefly bring up the Reis Across America Initiative. I had submitted a letter to you guys, the Board of Selectmen in early August, and you approved that. So I applied for and was approved to be the location coordinator for the Town of Andover. I submitted for the three cemeteries that we have in our area. So I have put in a notice to the River East for our first volunteer meeting that will be held on September 26th in the Town Hall Community Room because I need a screen and a video to play some videos. I am hoping that a lot of the people in the town will come out to support this event. We have three months till December 14th is the day that the the Reis Day. So we have a few months to coordinate this, get some volunteers to help do some fundraising, laying of the Reis, spreading the word. And this, of course, if nobody knows about what Reis Across America means, I should have started there. I apologize. It's an initiative to lay Reis on the gravestones of veterans in all across the country and the world actually to honor them during the holiday season. So if you, anybody has any questions or wants to call me or show up at my meeting on September 26th, I would really appreciate it. And also in for the future, there is a full ceremony that we will hold at the Veterans Park on December 14th at noon. So I will be asking for the Board of Selectmen to help support that as well and come out and give a little speech if you would like. And more details to follow. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Shannon Lott?
I'm only here to look for hopefully support for the tri board policy that Robert England and I have spent many months working on, and it looked like it was on your agenda for possible consideration tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Wright?
No, no comment at this time.
Okay. Wayne Kasek? Wayne, I'm sorry. Wayne Kay?
I'm just here to listen into what you guys are talking about. I'm particularly interested in the minority representation question. And if you got anything to say about the revisions to the town charter.
Okay. Chad on the iPhone? Okay. William Perez?
Good evening, First Selectmen and everyone else. Hope everyone's having a good night. I just wanted to, I heard a lot of commotion going on for the last couple of days. So I wanted to actually get involved and and watch how this process was gonna happen. But this is being tabled at this time. I just hope everybody has a good night.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Nick Lilwaki? Okay, Leanne Hutchinson?
Yes, I I don't know if this is going to come up anyway later on in your agenda. My item is now that the senior center, senior and community center director is in place, is the senior advisory committee going to be convened?
Okay. Dave Gastanian?
Nothing from me, thanks.
Kimberly Person?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Dennis O'Brien, I'll leave you alone. You don't need to talk right now, I would assume. Okay, so let's move on to item two additions and deletions to the agenda. Anyone?
Can I speak, please, if I if if I so may?
There's a page two, Jeff.
Oh, page two, I apologize. Let's move to page two. I have Matt.
Excuse me, Jeff.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Jeff.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm sorry. This is Liz Lowcatch, resident here in town. When I logged in, I got logged in under the name of owner, so my name isn't really showing up. You can put my video up. Can you see me now?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank you all for all you do, and I would like to express my concern for keeping an appropriate balance on the Board of Selectmen and as a result, sending my endorsement for Stephen King.
All right, thank you. Matt Hart?
Good evening, everyone. Matt Hart with the Capital Region Council Governments. I work closely with Eric Anderson on a number of topics. I look forward to making a presentation to you at some point in the future, and tonight I'm just listening in. Thank you for all you do, serving your community and and our region.
All right, thank you. Georgia? We'll come back to you, George. T. Gross? Gross?
Hi there, I'm just here to listen. Thank you.
I have a phone number that ends in five, four, seven, five. If you unmute, can you just state your name and where you live?
That's me, Leanne.
Nope, we'll skip you. All right, Carol Lee, I think you're on twice, but I have two Carols.
All set, Jeff.
Okay, you got it. Joanne Ebert?
Thank you, Jeff. I wasn't sure if you could see me because I did join a little bit late. I'm so glad I was able to join in after getting home from work. I haven't been able to keep up with what is said. I'm imagining that it has to do with electing a new Board of Selectmen member. So I was just gonna add my two cents after I heard a comment from one of the candidates or one of the persons coming forward. I was, and I'm still proud to have been elected to serve on the Board of Finance. You know, I had to hit the ground running and kind of make myself known and people on the current Board of Selectmen, namely Adrian, he wouldn't mind, had said, it's so great that like someone that wasn't even known got elected. Well, you have to kind of put work into it, and I probably was a little bit more known maybe ten years prior when my kids were in the school and I was a little bit more involved at that time. But that being said, I just wanted to mention that I'm still proud of the fact that I did get elected as an unaffiliated candidate. I just believe in listening to every issue as they come out. That's how I live my own life, too. That's how I've served the last three years on the Board of Finance. I know that everyone is gonna have their own opinion, but I just needed to say, I wasn't planning on saying anything. I was just gonna listen, but when that comment came up, I just wanted to make it known. I understand that everybody has their feelings on politics or whatever. I'm proud to have been elected as an unaffiliated, had to get my face back out there again, get my little brochures out there, get my feelings known, touch base with like the seniors, the people at the school, the people, you know, that are involved in everything. So there you go. I mean, I just look for the best candidate, so I can't wait to hear the the night that they come on and talk about their things. Thank you.
George Jett, I'm gonna come back to you because I see you're unmuted.
Yes, I finally unmuted. I just wanted to support Stephen King. And I'm interested in what's gonna be changed in the charter. But thank you for all the work you people do.
All right, thank you. And then I think the last one I have here is Marcy, and I believe Marcy Minor.
Hi, no, I don't have anything to say. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, and I'll ask like I should have done the first time, like gotten everybody. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say in public speak?
I think I got this, Jeff. Diane Griner.
Diane Griner, how could I do that?
I don't know.
There, well, and you're unmuted as well, so that's a good thing.
Okay, yeah. High tech, I got it. I just wanted to thank whoever is responsible for having the charter printed in the River East with all the things that are going in and taken out. I hope everybody gets to read that. There was a whole page in River East, and it was very informative, and I appreciate seeing it there, and I thank whoever made that happen. I think it's important that the residents read that and understand it so they're informed voters when it comes to November. So that was it. Thank you.
Okay, we need to give Carol Lee and Attorney Dennis O'Brien props on that. Okay.
Jeff, I just wanted to Jeff, I just wanted to mention one thing. There were some things that Joanne Hebert said. When you run for an election and you're endorsed by a party, either the Democrat or Republican Party, even if you're unaffiliated, you get seated as a member of that party. So it's much different than an appointment. Because we have Caitlin Greenhouse, she was endorsed by the Democratic Party, she was seated as a Democrat. And Joanne was endorsed by the Republican Party and seated as a Republican, just to make that clear.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So we're gonna move on to item two on the agenda additions and deletions. Do any of the members of the Board of Selectmen have anything they'd like to add or take away?
Yes, I'd like to add an executive session today for public speak to discuss personnel matters.
Anybody want to second that? I'll second it. We'll we'll do it all at one. We'll let's do it right now. I'll second it. All those in favor? I?
I.
I have nothing. Just because I don't know who that other voice was, you don't have to vote. This is now just the members of the Board of Selectmen, so I appreciate it. If you can all mute yourselves, that would be great. Go ahead, Eric.
So I'd like to add eleven D, which is Local Traffic Authority Discussion of the Moving the Stop Sign to Shad.
Okay, anything else for anyone else? Okay, so I'll make a motion that we add eleven D Local Traffic Authority Shad Below Stop Sign.
I'll second that.
Right? All those.
Second that. I just might want to say that it's the stop sign on Wood Fern, not on Shad. It's right now, it's on Wood Fern. And that we want to move it.
Same same area, so it's the same spot, right? One discussion about one stop sign.
It's one discussion, right? It's just
All right, all those in favor? I, five, nothing. Okay. So
Four, nothing.
Four, nothing. I miss Paula already. Okay, so executive session will be we'll put it as seventeen A. Executive session after public speak. We'll let everybody speak and let them go home. Okay, let's move on. We have item four, Planning Discussion Regarding Goal Settings. Review List of Current Projects and Grants and Determine Priorities for Next Three to Five Years. Eric, would you like to lead that?
Sure. So I asked or we discussed at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, and each board member was supposed to supply one idea or one of their basically their top priority for the near term, three to five year term. I received one response back from Anne Creme, who indicated that she thought it would be appropriate for us to pursue a community solar project. That was the only thing I got back in terms of feedback from the board. In, I sent to you directly and then put in the packet a project summary as of August 2024 of both the construction projects and building projects that are in some form either underway or just complete. So that is in your project or your your packet. And I also put in the packet directly following that a list of what grants that we have right now that that we are working for. So what, obviously, we've got a lot of projects going, and we have a fair amount of grant money that we've received that we're, you know, either spending or waiting on spending till we get a little farther along. So my question for the board is of those projects, what are your greatest priorities and what do you want me to focus on the most? Because the reality is if I put a little time into all of them, you know, all of them are gonna proceed slowly. If there's any of those projects that you know, are most important to you, that will be my focus area. So that that's all. I'm just looking for a little guidance back from the board on what things that you want me to focus on.
Well, if I look at that, I mean, we're already so far with Bunker Hill and so far with Long Hill. So those are projects that are gonna continue to move down the path with the engineering.
Correct.
Bunker Hill's done, but just needs to get built, and you put a start date of February of 2025, so we can move forward with that, right?
Correct.
Listen, you're you're only one, the one that I always sit there and come back to because it's it's out there and it's not moving forward is the the building on the old town firehouse. And I keep coming back to that one because it will add some value for us in being able to store our equipment there. And if built and designed correctly will allow us to have some storage that the town desperately needs. So
You said there was an update on that, Eric?
So there is an update on that. I did finally get bug shippo enough that the State Historical Preservation Office agreed to the document, the documentation we provided for the building. So they have signed that off. I went it out and got it printed. It's a little bit of a pain in the butt because it has to be archival paper and archival ink. But I satisfied the state's requirement for that, and and three copies are on the way to shippo. So we basically got shippo approval for tearing that down at this point. We are also doing the second part of that approval, which is, you know, addressing the windows at where the Andover Historical Society is, which is the the museum building. So that is back working. I did put an inquiry into the engineer who gave us the original design for the foundation and asked him whether that foundation would still be sufficient if we added a full second story to the building. There, they said it was. I was planning on going back to the company we were planning on buying the build package from and asking for a redesign for, you know, essential frontage or frontal access to the building. I'm guessing that is gonna add considerably to the cost. But if it's a priority to increase storage there, then that may be an expense that's well worth it. So I am back working on that project.
Is it frontal access or rear access?
Rear access, right?
Depends where you're standing. If you're in the upper parking lot, do you want to call that rear access? Yeah, you could call that rear access. That's probably a better term.
Eric, can you put that list up on the screen so we can go over?
Oh, sure. Hmm, maybe. Okay, can you see that? A little bigger?
Yep.
Just leave the, just leave that list up. Okay, you don't have to go through all of your details that you that's in the package. If anyone on on the meeting wants to go look at the package, it's all there. It's all in detail, but let's just talk about the individual items, Eric, and where we're at and what we can do differently on any of them. Okay, so I'll sit there and I'll go through after I read it, and I I'm obviously you know, the top three are long-term projects. They need to be handled one at a time because we can't be shutting down any of our major roads anytime altogether at once, and it doesn't make any sense. Run the projects, finish them out. So Bunker Hill's first, that's a 2025 project. Long Hill Bridge, what's your expectation on that? So everybody knows 2026.
Estimated that's probably 2027 is more realistic, given the rate at which the state is moving and how many projects are in the pipeline for the state right now.
All right, Bazola Road? The Culver?
Bazola Road should be at substantial design completion by October or November of this year. And then we start in on, you know, state and federal permitting. And it's not clear to me how long that will take, but I don't expect it to be you know, short term, you know, a couple of months. I expect that to be six months to a year to get all the permits in place.
All right, so maybe on this project summary, which we can put up in future meetings, we just put the expected date of potential construction or start of construction. So you're assuming the Bazula Culver 2028, 2029. I mean, I mean, I know it's 2024, but how long?
Actually, I think the Bazola Culver, I don't think we're gonna get to that in the 2025 construction season, but I think that will be done in the 2026 construction season. That's probably only a three-month project. It's not a real long project. Because it's quite a bit smaller.
The nine hundred and eighty-five thousand is the total project cost on that, right?
That's the total project cost to the town. That's half of the total. That's with a state local bridge grant that will cover half the cost of the replacement.
And hopefully, in the meantime, Scott, that the state figures out their issues related to funding of those types of projects for small rural communities like ours and does something different.
Because we don't have the money.
That has been expressed to both our representatives as to assistance on that front. So the roadwork projects are just as we go, Eric. So those are each budget cycle.
Correct.
The multi-use pathway Route 316, obviously, we have a grant, we have where you're working through the design aspect of this, and then there's a lot more interaction related to the property owners and everything else that would need to go on. What's your what's your ballpark? So everybody is aware of timing on that potentially.
So the issue with the multi-use pathway is that we're gonna have So the issue with the multi-use pathway is that we're going to have funding. That we used from the state legislative appropriation that will get us to. Approximately the sixty percent design stage. Um, and then the question that we have outstanding with DOT. Is whether the DOT will allow essentially a canned. A bridge for package for the pedestrian crosswalks. Or do we need to have an engineered plan for that? So the at some point, and and I think we're eight months to a year from needing to to do that. The town is going to have to cover the difference in the design, the design only because we have construction funding. But cover the cost between what we had in the legislative appropriation and the. The cost to complete the design. And I honestly don't have a good feel for what that's going to be. Because it depends significantly on decisions made by the DOT. As to what options they want for that. Um, so at some point when we're at the sixty. Percent phase and we've gotten, you know, more feedback back from the state. Uh, we'll have to be talking about a supplemental appropriation for that, probably. Um, but I don't know what that's going to look like at this point.
Uh, the.
Construction's at least two years out.
Percy Cook Trail Improvement.
So we're just waiting for the uh DEEP to get back to us. And complete paperwork and complete the agreement on that. That went to town meeting and we approved the town's contribution. And then I need to know from DOT whether we can use our existing engineer. Who essentially designed the the phase one or the conceptual portion of that. And just utilize them for the design. Um, since we already know what their cost estimate is for doing it. Or whether that has to go out to RFP. So at this point, that is just waiting on the the DEEP for the next step.
And then the AES uh parking lot, or we should just sit there and say town parking lot improvements. Because it's it's includes the remainder of the parking lot in the town hall. What's your plan on that one?
So at this point, the reason why I put it just the AES parking lot improvement is that the. The school board still very much wants to redo the upper lot at AES. Um, we know from the previous bid as of last year, that was roughly a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar uh. You know, cost proposal. Um, right now. There would be the money set aside to do that, but the school board has prioritized. Doing the internal uh work, plumbing work. To restore the bathrooms that have failed um in the upper part of the building. So I think that's going to be funding dependent. Um, that work could be done. Essentially at any time. Um, you, we could schedule that for next spring. But we just have to make sure that we have the funding to pay for it.
Um, building projects, obviously, we can go through each one of these, but you you have community center upgrades. We definitely want to sit there and get on the agenda. I know those are funding dependent at this point in time. Uh, related to some. Federal and state, but mostly the federal. Funding that you're looking for. Is there anything on that list of anything that? We need to get done. What what are the athletic field upgrades mean? Is that the project that we're working on that's grant funded?
Correct. That is the steep grant to do the pickleball courts in the playground and various lighting upgrades at the field.
Okay. And Scott, I know you're on that committee. Have you gotten, I mean, have you guys finalized your your wish lists and your designs?
Um, we're trying to get the engineer to finalize the drawing.
Okay.
But most of, most of. Everything is very close to being final, yes. We need some, some uh good documentation to see how much footage we have for every. Different facet of that area.
Right, so the the big question we're trying to work through with that right now. Is do we hire a general contractor to do the whole project? Or? Do we act as the general contractor as the town? And essentially use Public Works to do the excavation and then hire the subs directly. Um, it is possible to do that. Um, both Chris in the finance office and myself. Are going to be sitting through the the CHRO training, the contractor training. Portion, because although I've gone through the training twice. For administrate administering the contractors. Um, I haven't, I don't know what is involved in that in the construction management portion if we go to do that. Um, there is an awful lot of paperwork involved. Um, it will absolutely be a prevailing wage job. Um, and it will have to, we will have to do the the uh. Hire the correct percentage or assign the correct percentage of work for a minority. Or slash woman-owned business contractor as well as small business contractors. So if we do it ourselves, it's probably considerably cheaper. Um, however, there is an awful lot of administrative burden. And I want Chris and the treasurer on board before we think about committing to doing that.
I mean, the submission on that is not. It it's not that significant. I wouldn't. I know you got to get with the treasurer and but I wouldn't worry about that and. It's not. It's following a form and submitting it to the state to get reimbursed. Um, so. That project. Once we settle on the design could get started and done because we already have the funding for that entire project.
Correct.
And we've approved the money that the town would need to commit to that. And then you would also be able to, if you were the general contractor. You would also be able to use the town, the work being done by Public Works as an offset.
So that is correct, and that's what our intention is. Our intention is to use. Public Works as part of the town's uh offset anyway. Um, you know, it's just a question of do we do what the town can do first and. Have the GC do the rest or do we pick off uh greater portions of it? Um, so that we're still working through right now.
Well, so so now you're considering doing being the GC yourself and Eric?
I'm considering it. I know that's what the the group really wants. Because they don't want to spend the extra money and they want to get as much out of it as they can. Um, I just need to make sure we can handle the administrative load to do that.
And you have the bandwidth to do it. You said you didn't before.
Well. That's why I'm saying I'm willing to go through the shipo training, or not the shipo, the CHRO training. The contractor portal training and figure out what's actually involved in doing it. I mean, so far our luck with contractors being able to successfully do the paperwork for that hasn't been too great either. Um, so I'm not sure we're going to do any worse than most of the contractors we hire. So uh. So yeah, I'm considering it.
Okay, and the other ones that are on the bottom, other than the Public Works Fuel Delivery System Upgrade, which needs to be discussed. And it should probably be discussed at another meeting. Um. Simply because that cost is not in the budget and we have to determine. What its value really is. But the other ones have been, obviously, the AES plumbing one hasn't been done, but the AES bleacher repair is completed.
Correct.
The sanding of the floor has been completed.
Hmm, correct.
The the fan upgrade is is waiting. Or is it done? When is that planned to be done?
I don't have a date. I'm going to have to come back to the board on that one. Because the cost of the electrical work required to do that. Puts it in the realm where we really should be putting it out to RFP. Um, which I have not done. So we have to think about that one a little bit. Um, I think that's probably outside the scope of this meeting.
I would like to be part of that discussion because. I would like to look at the electrical controls and see what's, see what's required. Okay, just. I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. That's all.
Okay. Uh, does anyone else, um, any of the other members of the board have anything they want to discuss related to these projects?
I'd just like to try to get that fan upgrade done as soon as possible because it will be a huge energy savings, especially in the winter months.
I agree, it would make basketball practice more comfortable, so. Let's go. Okay, um, we're going to move on to um. I mean, do we really want to, do we, we'll move on to four B, determine priorities next three to five years, but we really just reviewed all those things. I mean, there's not anything more significant that needs to be discussed.
Um, well, the question is really, what are your priorities? Not. You know. I'd given you a list of what we're doing right now.
Well, Eric, if we sit there and we utilize the funding that that we've already gotten from the other parcels and actually execute those programs as quickly as possible. I think we'd be doing a huge benefit for the community. You know, as far as um. Building projects that we that. I mean, there's, there are, there are improvement projects that that I personally would like. I would like to sit there and see us have a a a state. An understanding with the state, like what the town can do and what the state will fund for the town to do to maintain the area along Route Six. Which you know I've been complaining about for years. Because it looks like heck and um. I don't, I don't like it. Um. There's certain things that we can do, but it's not our property. It just makes the town look poor. Uh, look poorly. It's not a good reflection on the town and what we stand for, so um. But I don't have anything other than putting a sewer down Route Six that I would love to sit there and see. And if we were going to put a sewer down Route Six, uh, it would have to be totally state-funded. And then it would be a whole other issue, so um. That would be my big, big wish for the town because it would open us up for some. Uh, potential additional economic development. It's not probably going to happen, but um. Uh, I did share that with uh. The state representative and the state senator and uh. Other state representatives and state senators that might sit there and think of considering doing a project between Manchester and Wyndham, but um. No, Eric, I think you're doing a great job. I think that the programs and the projects are are progressing. Would we all love them to go faster? Sure, you need to tell us what you need to be able to get them executed faster. Um, and then we can sit there and decide if we can. Spend the money and and give you the resources to do that. I would also ask you to talk to uh. No, my God, he worked central. I can't remember his name. I'm sorry.
Ed Serrisley.
Yes.
Meeting with him tomorrow morning. What do you want me to discuss with him?
Um. Listen, what, what? What resources he can bring to the to uh. To assist and also what he can sit there and do to potentially bring um. You know, some internships or interns to assist in some of these these projects because obviously he has. He has all of the construction and engineering background, but he also has the. Interaction with the university, with Central at least, and potentially with UConn. So maybe there's some resources that we can bring because the biggest issue is, we sure, I'd love to do all of it, but. Um, it's not like we're going to throw a significant amount of additional money at any of these projects, uh, you know, as an offset. So if we can find some resources that are available, let's take advantage of it. Um, so Ed would be my, the one person I would tell you to reach out to and see if he can direct us to an appropriate um. Vehicle or individuals that might be able to assist you and get some of these projects moving and get some of the. The basic work done without having you have to do all that detail work, so. Um, that would be my recommendation. But as far as projects go, uh, that's a pretty long list. It's pretty well funded by grant money. You know, for what we're trying to do, yeah. Now, if you ask me the project I want dealt with, um. It would be related to, you know, how the the state property that is running through the middle of our community looks and and looks terrible. Okay. Um. Anybody else have any other issues related to the projects or anything else that they would like Eric to look at? Okay, let's move on to item five, charter revision. The status of the questions has five A. Um, Dennis, uh. Just so we're aware, Dennis O'Brien, town attorney. Um, those questions have been submitted to the Secretary of State or for approval?
Uh, probably not yet. I don't know. They're due, not due till the twentieth of this month, but. I know I talked to Carol and Carol was going to do it early. So I'm not sure whether they've been submitted or not. I think last, late last week, Carol was working on putting the uh. You know, the draft report into the um River East, which was successfully done. Actually, it's two pages, not just one. And um, you know, we we both worked pretty hard on that last several weeks. So I see Carol is on the on the line here.
They have been submitted and approved.
Oh, terrific. So the secret, I'm glad I came to the meeting.
Okay, so Carol, while you're still here. The Secretary of State approved the the questions and. They've already positioned it on the ballot. Is that accurate? Excellent. Do you have a draft of, um, you know, without all of the names positioned that you can show the board at our next meeting?
I probably would be able to print that off of the EMS.
Okay, that would be great. Just so we could sit there and see, I mean, the concern. Uh, the concern, my concern was always the number of questions. Um. You know, uh, Attorney O'Brien worked. Uh, took input from uh Jeff Murray and and myself and the rest of the board members to sit there and try to simplify the questions. And make each one of the questions a little bit of uh. A little bit easier to understand because there's going to be a significant number of questions as people go into the ballot box to deal with all of these issues. So um, I would love to sit there and see how it looks. And do you think, Carol, that it will be scannable versus? Uh, will it be scannable?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um. Uh, charter revision, item B, discuss and act upon. A resolution per General Statute Section to authorize the town clerk and town attorney to prepare, prepare timely. Or timely prepare and approve explanatory comments pertaining to the charter revision ballot questions to be considered and voted upon by the electors of the town. During the president, presidential election to be held on November fifth, twenty twenty four. So, yes, Dennis.
Uh, I just, I just wanted to uh. Make a slight amendment to that. I did that in in a hurry. It made a deadline last week and I had just gotten back from a doctor's appointment in Lockville. And I did leave out a couple of words, uh, if I could insert them or you could. Move to amend or somebody could move to amend. It's very simple. I just wanted to make, I it's probably covered by the statute, but I just want to make sure it's in there. In the second line where it says timely prepare and approve. Print and disseminate. I would add print and disseminate explanatory comments. And most of that's going to be done by our town clerk. But I have the uh, I have the authority to approve the questions and they have to be um neutral. Just uh to uh inform the voters, you know, what we didn't say in the questions, just so they'll understand them better.
Yeah. What was the other, what what else? What was the other, what, what else did you wanna change? Is that it?
That, that's it. If you got that, it was to add, uh, print and disseminate after. Uh, prepare and approve. With a comma in there somewhere.
Okay, so I'll get this started. I'll make a motion to, um. That we pass a resolution per general statute section nine dash three, six, nine, B. To authorize the town clerk and the town attorney to timely prepare, approve, print and disseminate. Explanatory comments. Explanatory comments pertaining to the charter revision ballot questions to be considered and voted upon by the electors of the town. During the presidential election to be held on November fifth, twenty twenty-four. Okay, Scott Persoon seconded that, um. So, um, uh, discussion on this, this is so that, uh. Uh, we prepare a detailed, um. Summary of the questions, which are smaller and shorter questions. So that the voters who would like to in advance review the documentation, they can sit there and make up their decision whether to vote yes or vote no. So. Anybody have any further discussion or questions related to that? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. All right, four, nothing. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis.
Item six, library. Board directors, I mean, um, these are all. Have been outstanding. Do we need to deal with these? Do we have anybody that's here to talk about them, Eric?
So at the last meeting, the board had decided that they were going to look in the community room. And decide whether they felt, whether you all felt it was appropriate. Because we don't have any other location for that. So if you've done that, then you can make a decision tonight. If you haven't done that. Um, my personal feeling is that that room really isn't appropriate, uh, for the, the. The clock because there's no real security in the building. And, you know, there's so many keys. That get into that side of the building. That, uh, it would be difficult to maintain secure. Around an expensive. Fragile. Clock.
Um, has anyone gone? I mean, listen, I know from that space, I don't think a clock like that. Fits in that building or fits in that spot. I mean, if it was gonna fit someplace, it would fit in. You know, I wouldn't, I would go in the town hall on the way up, but it's, there's no place for it. There's no spot for it. Doesn't really work. I mean, does anybody have any? Real need to want to put that clock somewhere?
Go ahead.
I, I was thinking it could. After being in the new community center, I would think it'd be better in there. Either in that front hallway area or maybe in the, um. That smaller room has the, uh, couches and such in it.
Okay, um, so Ann, what, what I would ask that you do, um, the, if you could. Is if you could get the measurements and just look at where that clock might fit and how far out it would extend. If you have that. Um, Jeff Ballard should be able to get them for us.
Okay.
Right? Um, community garden, solar panel and water pump. I know Jeff Ballard has sat there and had a discussion on that, um. I'm, I mean, I'm not ready to sit there and. And, um. Discuss that today unless anybody else really is and wants to discuss that.
Would you like to table that or take it off the agenda? For the next meeting?
You can take it off the agenda for the next meeting because you can push it till later in the, you know, early in the spring next year to discuss that. Because he's not gonna need any waters and solar because the growing season is pretty much over. And then there has to be, um. That community garden needs to be, um. Handled by the director from the community center from a standpoint of she, Tess should get the information from the. Group running the gardens and then come back and appropriately budget for that because this has happened basically every year. With Jeff Ballard coming to us with a project and asking us to do a supplemental appropriation related to the community garden. And while I appreciate the good work that they do and the vegetables that they donate to the. Um. To the food pantry, I would appreciate if they would sit there and get this done in advance during a budget cycle so it can be brought to the rest of the community. So. Um, since it doesn't need to be done now because the growing season is basically over and he's already got his water. Tank from the hose from the community center, let's just move it till later and. Maybe even include it in next year's budget c- the cycle. Right?
Okay.
Seven appointments, um. Well, we really should do resignations before we do appointments, um. But we'll do appointments first. Uh, I know in the packet, uh, there was included the RTC. Letter endorsing Stephen King and there was also the letter from, uh, Joe Goodwin. Related to, uh, his potential. His potential for that position as well, um. I would ask, did Eric, did we get anything else? I, cause I know it was just in the paper on Tuesday. Have we received any other letters from any other residents?
That would be a question for Carol. I don't know of any.
Okay, Carol?
No, we haven't.
No, we have, okay. All right, um. So we're going to, um. Deal with appointing the, eh, the individual next month to the board. So obviously we as a board received Paula's resignation after her last meeting. On a personal note, I, I wanna thank Paula King. Um, she was, uh, also appointed to this board. She did a phenomenal job, um. She was very committed to it and I can only wish her the best because she was, uh. A, a great member of this board for the. Six years or five years that she was involved in it and, um. I, I would like to recommend that everyone who sees her says thank you for everything she did for the town. Also, at the same time, we also received two other resignations, uh, one from the Board of Finance and one from the Board of Education, so Stephen Fuss. Stephen Fuss actually resigned from the Board of Fin- Board of Education and Brian Briggs resigned from the Board of Finance, so. Uh, those are also two additional positions that need to be filled, um. They do not come in front of us though, Eric, according to anything, I mean, so.
That's just for informational purposes.
There you go. Okay. Uh, anybody have any of the issues related to the appointments or the resignations? We'll combine them as two. Okay.
I should say that, uh, Jeff, I'm working on an issue pertaining to the, uh. Interpretation of the minority representat- minority representation rules in the state statutes, the charter. And a lot of details regarding the Board of Selectmen and the, uh. The other two boards, Board of Finance, Board of Education, and, um. I've done, I've completed my legal research today after several hours and, uh. I will be writing an opinion very soon.
Okay, if you can do that, that would be great. Thank you, um. Item nine, town administrator's report.
Uh, I did not put a written report. Uh, in your packet. I kinda tried to concentrate on bringing the. Project summaries up to date for the board as well as the current grant list. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has about any, uh. Anything the town is doing.
Uh, where's Public Works and what have they got going and since they're our biggest? Project performers, what do you got?
Sure, so Public Works just finished, uh, fixing what's been kind of a longstanding problem. On Aspenall Drive. Uh, we've had a really significant water seat coming out of the mid- middle of the road. Uh, that showed up about four or five years ago. Uh, so they spent a bunch of time investigating that. Um, it turns out there was an existing drain pipe running under that road. That at some point when the state widened Route six, it looks like they terminated the end of the pipe. Um, and when they redid the catch basins, they didn't move any of the town structures into that catch basin. So Public Works dug it up, they replaced the pipe. Uh, they put a sump there for the water to drain into and that got repaved yesterday. So that part should be addressed. They, there will be a, the next major problem to tackle. Is there is a culvert that runs under Gilead Road? That's been causing us problems for about ten years or so. Um, A, cause the culvert's too small and B, because it has a big sag in the middle. Um, basically the old culvert failed. Um, and they didn't have time to fix it properly, so they shoved a smaller diameter pipe up through the middle of it. Um, and it's been like that for about ten years. So the next big thing will be to shut Gilead Road down at half at a time. And repair that drainage because that's. Um, that floods out the road very considerably every time we get a heavy rainfall. So that's kinda next in the priority to address. Um, at the same time, Abby, uh, which is a paving company. Is repaving the area behind the town hall, replacing the curbing. Um, that was taken out when we ran the conduit for the new generator. And the propane supply to the new community center and town hall. So that will be finished paving, uh, tomorrow. Um, so those are the two bigger scale projects that are going on right now. And then the hope is after that to get them back working on, uh. Uh, over fixing drainage on Hendy Road and get back to the Hendy Road issues.
Where's the culvert on Gilead?
It's past the intersection of Cone Road.
Yeah.
Um, if you're coming from three sixteen, it's past where Cone Road intersects. I can't tell you exactly where on there. I mean, I know what it looks like, but. It's before you really start going downhill. On, uh, Gilead.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions for Eric? Okay. Uh, item ten, old business, um. Community s- center construction update. And the signage discussion.
So the last major step that had to be done. Um, before we could go from a conditional CO to a final CO for that building. Was installation of the exterior lighting. Uh, the exterior lighting, uh, went in. Oh, about a week ago. Um, I went out there after dark on two occasions and took pictures of it. I didn't use a light meter. But I think I demonstrated to the satisfaction of the zoning commission chair. And the zoning agent that there was sufficient lighting in all the walkable areas along that. So I don't think either of them has any issues with that. Uh, if you remember, we agreed, the town agreed that once the lighting was actually in, if necessary. We would readjust the, the large overhead lights that illuminate the front parking at the town hall. Um, so that has, uh, that does not seem like it's gonna be necessary. There does seem to be plenty of light intensity there. So, uh, that's all I have other than. I would like to have a quick discussion, so we had kinda decided. That the, uh, sign that was proposed by Leading Edge. Really wasn't something that we were overly happy with. Um, so we will be working to back that out of the final cost. Um, of the building and settling the final, uh. You know, we, we still owe them the five percent retainage, uh, for the job. So. I had worked out with Paula what I thought was an appropriate look for that sign, something a little bit more modern. Um, than what Leading Edge was proposing, but since Paula is not, no longer, uh, a selectman. What I wanted to do is show you, and this is, this is, does not say Andover or anything like that, but. What I was suggesting was that we do a simple laser cut, uh. You know, stainless steel sign and attach that to the wall. And I'll show you a picture if you wanna see it of basically what I'm proposing. Um, but. I don't feel like I want the final say in this and I don't know how you wanna go about picking. Who's gonna design the sign or what you're gonna do with that or what we're gonna do with that. You want me to show you the image?
May as well show us the image, yeah.
So that was basically what I was looking at, just a relief cut sign. Um, saying Andover Community and Senior Center.
I think it'd be fine. I, I think you might wanna sit there and do something. You know, and dimensionally, but yes, I have no problem with that concept. Do we have a, the sign company that can execute that for us?
I mean, I, I would find one. But what do you want to do? Do you want? Who do you want designing or picking the sign? How do you wanna proceed with the project? Do you want me to just try to bring you back proofs or?
No.
What are you gonna put for a border on it, Eric?
Let's, um. Let's sit there and, and Scott, by email, we'll sit there and we'll do what the. How the text would work. And then once we're all comfortable and we're all good with, uh. The font and how it, what it's saying, which is pretty simple, but. We'll then give that to Eric and Eric can go to a sign company. The sign company can give us some additional. Functionality, like do we want a frame on this, a border on this, and how do we want it shaped out and so on, so. But I have no problem with that concept, but.
Good question.
Yep.
Is, um, is there electrical power nearby for the sign that we can eliminate it?
There is an outlet nearby.
Cause I've seen some really cool things where you can put plexiglass behind this and, and put embedded LEDs in it, so it actually lights up. The, the text and then you get like a halo around the outside of it. It looks really sharp. That's a very modern look.
All right, so let, let's actually do that and then Jeff, that might be something that. I would assume we'd have to sit there and get an electrician in because you'd wanna hide all those cords. So let, let's sit there. I, I agree.
We could do a little voltage and then just do a light sensor so it comes on at night.
Yeah, I, I, I like the idea, um.
It looks really sharp when you do it that way.
Let's, um. I will sit there and have someone I work with do the. A, a few graphic representations and then you can sit there and everybody can pick the one they like the best and then we'll shrink it down. We'll give it to Eric to get, sit there and go get, um. A sign put on it because something like this would look nice on that building. So, and lit would even look nicer.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, ten B, discussion of blight and level of involvement. I know Eric put in the package a significant amount of information on the blight. Current status, anybody got any issues related to that information?
Like, uh, most of it has been taken care of, which is good.
Can, uh, somebody let me know what the status is of the house up on the top of, uh, Long Hill in Hendy? The one that was demolished and there's just a stone foundation left? Is that a building permit or what's going on with that property? Cause it's been like that for months.
I mean, I rode by there the other day and the guy was out weed whacking out front doing yard work, but. I don't have a, I don't know what the status is. That's, I think, two forty-four Long Hill.
Yep, is there an active permit for that? Is, I, I just, it just looks like they gutted it and they just kinda left it. And it's been like that for at least six months now.
Now he's, he's tearing all the, uh. Bushes and trees. Now he's, he's tearing all the, uh, bushes and trees out of there, I saw this weekend.
Yeah, what's the plan? Is the plan to rebuild the house or demolish it? I mean, it just seems like it's kind of a limbo.
Yeah, good question.
Uh, I don't, I did not recognize that on the list of permits for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four that were in our packet.
That's why I'm asking the question.
I mean, it goes.
I don't know what the status is.
So, can you get it to us for that next, next month, and Eric, the same thing goes with twelve Center Street? Um. I saw that there was a permit applied for, but it looks like it was in a, in, not in an approved status. So where is twelve Center Street? What are they doing?
Gold, the old market.
Yeah.
Or is that, I mean, it's demolished, so they don't have to do anything relative to blight. Um, we did have a couple of light enforcement actions against it, but that's been addressed. So, and I know he had building plans. Uh, but I don't think it's gone anywhere. Um. Um, I, I, but I don't know specific details on it. So you want to know about twelve Center Street and you want to know about two forty-three Long Hill? Okay.
Wouldn't even had to get a demo permit, a demo, two forty-three?
Yes.
Probably, yeah.
That foundation doesn't look like it. You could use it for a, a new house, I, I would say.
Mm-hmm.
There's a building permit in the draft, that's like the two, the two bill, the two permits that I was looking at were twelve Center Street and. Two forty-three Long Hill, they're both in draft status, so it doesn't look like they were approved. And. I don't see a demolition permit for either one of them, but I'm assuming twelve Center Street was demolished prior to that fiscal year.
Right, twelve Center Street was demolished several years ago, so that wouldn't be, it certainly wouldn't be on any current forms.
And he also, he did get a demo permit for that.
Yes, he did.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, um. Let's move on. So we have a ten C certificate of adoption of the hazard mitigation plan. That was in our package from. Who was it, Eric? Was such a nice fancy plan.
Correct, it's about, it, the resolution is on page thirty, so you have to make a resolution as a board. To adopt the plan or the, the plan created. So this plan was basically, uh, created by CROG. Through another organization, so they hired a different, they collaborated with a different organization. To produce a natural hazard mitigation plan. For all of the thirty-eight towns in the CROG region. So we are obligated as a town to have a plan. Um, but we don't really have the resources to draft and come up with a full-blown plan. So the, the capital region essentially, um, in. In collaboration with CERC produces the plan. Um, at the last meeting, I sent you a, or after the last meeting, I sent you a copy. Of the plan as well as the appendix, uh, for Andover to review. So now unless you have any other questions. Um, you could make, you could pass the resolution, um, and then we could submit it.
Anybody have any issues related to the, the plan? Any questions? Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to adopt the. Hazard mitigation plan provided by CROG to the town of Andover, for the town of Andover.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh. Any further questions or any more discussion related to the, the plan? No, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. New business, um.
Jeff, I'll have a copy of that, uh, probably tomorrow for you to sign and then Carol. Can witness and put the town clerk seal on it and we'll be done with that. Thank you.
Alright. Uh, new business, uh, item, a building department cost analysis. Um. Listen, I, I reviewed those items and, um. I'd like to know how many new houses were built in the town of Andover. In that cycle. Any ideas, Eric?
Hmm, three to five maybe? I, I don't know. I don't know.
That's fine, because if I do the, uh, math on this, and my math is. The building. Building, no, not pretty good. The building cost analysis, if you took out the school, which is in here a couple times. Uh, it will be lower than this, but the, the average cost that someone comes in. And provides to the community, the town to be. Have their permitted fees on is twenty-eight thousand two fifty-eight. That includes. The school transactions, which were fairly large, so there were only two, it appears like two. Houses, like, some, some reason we get to, like, there's a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Project for the school that they permitted, estimated cost. Do we know what that was, Eric?
No idea.
Okay. So if you take out the estimated costs and you took out that nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars and they had another one in there for the school. Um, I'd like to know what that nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars was, that permit, um. And I, I just. I, I wasn't the roof, we did the roof before, I'd like to. I would like to know that, but, uh, what I was doing was, I wasn't looking for that per se, I was just trying to take the total estimated costs. For all the bir, building permits, which was three point eight million dollars, and divided it by the number of permits. Which is a hundred and thirty-six, and you get, you know. Twenty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-eight, so that's basically saying that every project in the community started and permitted, that's what they paid their fees on. So I, I've always been, and I, I, I know that that's problematic because it's a volunteer system. Um, I did like the, uh, information at the back of the packet that everybody got, that, um. This is always how I want to, I, I thought should do, it's on page seventy-nine of the presentation. Which basically gives, um, you know, a, a, a cost per square foot for what type of project being done. And gives a. A building fee for it, so, uh, if you're gonna build a new house, it would be, you know. A hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, and that's what you would pay your permits on. Um, it would make that department much more, uh, pay for play and be able to support itself than it currently is doing. And, um. I, I absolutely believe that that's where the direction that we should go in is. To sit there and set up just a, a, a template and make it easy, because, um. You know, the last time I started looking at this, I'll just tell you, I was going through a plan and, and they put the square footage down, and one of the, one of the. Permits was a square footage on a, on a house to be built, and, um, they failed to include the second floor, and they decided. Their cost was X, and. Because we don't have a structure for those types of costs, no one. Fights back, no one, no one fights for the town's interests and the costs related to the town, so, um. I definitely think that the item on page eighty-one, uh. We should sit there and put that into place as soon as possible.
Right.
Um, uh, so. We don't have to do it at this meeting, but we should be doing this.
Right. The problem is that that's expensive for us. Because we cannot do that with permit link. So if we do that, we are talking about going to the more expensive permitting software. Which in the past you have not been willing to do. So this is what we tried to do in permit link right from the beginning. And we were told that basically we cannot. So, short of, we could make the building official. Go through this for every single project. But then we're gonna start potentially running into more hours with the building.
Okay, can you, uh, for our next meeting, do like an ROI analysis on what the cost of this upgraded software would be, because. You know, if I'm looking at this and I'm going, hey, um. You know, a new house, the old fee would be twenty-eight hundred dollars, and the new fee would be nine, nine hundred, nine thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars. That's a seven, six thousand five hundred dollar increase in the permitted costs, which is really accurate. Because that's the cost that they're gonna put into the building, not what they're estimating and giving to the, the. Building enforcement officer, so right there, you're, you're making X, and I'd like to understand what the software cost is.
But, so this was the original. Analysis we did, that was now roughly five years ago. When we were putting the software in. To begin with. So what we did was basically obligated the contractor to put down the correct amount. And had the building official review it to decide whether it's correct or not.
Um, and how many times in your knowledge has the building official sat there and, and. Corrected an estimate?
I don't know, uh, that's not a question I've ever asked.
So, so what I'm asking is that you sit there and get us the cost of the software upgrade. That would be required for us to sit there and to go to this type of, uh, permitting fee structure. And then we can sit there and decide what we do at our next meeting.
Right.
Okay, so you're unwilling to consider either of the options that I put in there? Which is increase the fee basis for each permit, which would accomplish what you were trying to do?
Um, I still think what you end up with is you end up with, uh, a voluntary system for people estimating costs. And if you sit there and give them a higher fee, they're gonna try to estimate their costs lower. It's just, it's just human nature, it's not anything other than that. So, I'm asking you to sit there and. Give us the cost of the software, because I've always been a believer that if you just charge by the square foot, then the only analysis that someone's doing is looking at the plan. And, and trying to verify that their, their house plan, square footage is right, or their deck plan, square footage is right, and you know, so on and so forth. So. Uh, let, let's talk about that at our next meeting. Um.
Just one point, had a question on a minute ago about. What they spent nine hundred and eighty thousand on twenty-five School Road, that's the community senior center.
So Eric, we put in a permit for that and zero cost?
Of course.
Oh, so I was on the wrong address, Anne. There you go, so Eric has been putting permits in, and I had the wrong address, so we are, what, what is our School Road address?
Well, I put twenty-five into Google Map and it came up with the, the empty lot there, that's now the community senior center. The, the, and, well, elementary school is thirty-five.
Thirty, school is thirty-five, yeah.
The community center is twenty-five.
In the town hall, in the town hall is twenty-five School Road.
No, the town hall is seventeen School Road.
A seventeen.
Eight School Road, I can't get my School Road addresses together, so that is a town, that is a town permit, that's okay. Town permit for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars to take out of our total three million dollars. So, okay, let me do the math for everybody, so it's gets, it gets worse, so three, eight, four, three, one, six, one, minus nine fifty. Um. Calculated and like it. Anyway, it's not good, so the cost, the cost per project in our town is being estimated in an extremely low number.
Right.
Probably.
We're, we're, we're wasting money every day. Every time a permit is done, we're lost.
Uh, twenty-one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars is the cost of a project in our town to sit there and do it, um. It just seems, seems awful low to me, and I know Eric, I, I, I had this discussion with the. Previous, you know, when I first got on the board with the building in, in, you know, oh my God, it's so difficult to do, I, I just.
Last we knew, the building, both the building inspector was gonna get together and reevaluate all the fees.
Yeah.
That was the last thing.
Which is what Eric is doing and providing all this information, which is very helpful.
If you looked on page seventy-five, that was Rich's recommendation for what the fee structure. Should be.
Yeah, he, he was upping the building.
He basically uses that. When he reviews to decide whether the cost basis is reasonable or not. For what they put into permit link.
Okay, so I, I would just like you to sit there and provide the. Um. I'd like you to provide the cost of the software upgrade that we would need. So, that way we can make a reasonable decision as to what we're doing. Okay. Um. Eleven B, the tri-board policy on the AES capital projects, so, um. I know I had talked and I'd heard about this coming through, um. I definitely want to read this in a little bit more detail and understand what. It's trying to say, I understand the basis of it, I want to get with the town attorney and understand. What it's doing related to the Board of Selectmen and, um. How the monies are being and the capital projects are being approved, because we do have a capital project program that's in place. And the Board of Education is on that, um, capital improvement, uh, board. So I'd like to read this and understand it, and, um. Obviously, the Board of Education and the Board of Finance were driving this, and so it's now on the Board of Selectmen's desk, and, um. I'd like to table it and move it to next meeting, so we can sit there and, and vote on that. Or decide what we ask them to refine. Anybody else have any problem with that? Okay. Um. Item eleven C, the King Property Lot Line Agreement. Uh, Eric, where are you related to all of these components? Obviously, this came to us in August.
Uh, I think Dennis could probably answer that better than I. At this point, it's a legal issue coming up, making sure you have the descriptions right in that. That's not an Eric thing, that's a Dennis thing, I think.
Alright.
Well, it is now, Eric, but, uh, I'm hoping that, you know, as I said to you before, that you and I could sit down and work on it together. Because I am not a meets and bounds guy. And, uh, you know, you are, and, uh. I would like to sit down with you and go over it and then, um. Respond to, uh, Mr. King's attorney, Mr. Tom McDermott, who sent me those papers. So I'd like, I could, I could find some time soon, unless you're off busy studying to be a general contractor. I'm trying to be funny, sorry.
That wasn't funny.
I can do better than that, but I'm, but I'm, but I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna stop.
Okay.
So anyway.
So can the two of you guys get together and sit there and respond to Attorney McDermott, so that we can sit there and have this, uh, wrapped up? Um.
I'm ready.
Okay.
Soon.
So Eric, please, uh, organize that with, uh, Attorney O'Brien, so we can get that done, and if we need. To move that to, um, Attorney Brants or something else, let's talk about the costs related to that and get that. If it has to go that direction, let's move that forward. Alright.
Okay.
Uh. Anybody have any other issues on any of those items? Nope. Okay, let's, uh, move on to item twelve, the approval of the minute.
Duty. Shadlow traffic.
Oh, I am so sorry. Eleven D, local traffic authority and the Shablow, um. And, and what is the other street?
Wood Fern.
Wood Fern stop sign. There we go. Eric, what do you got?
Um, so you asked me to put it back on the agenda after the last meeting after. Um, so you asked me to put it back on the agenda after the last meeting after one of the, the neighbors. Um indicated that uh he had an issue with moving the stop sign. Um, so I did put it back on. I did drive it multiple times from each direction and I rode it. In each direction from my bicycle and I walked across the crosswalk. So. I mean, honestly, I think there's no right or wrong answer there. Um, I can tell you that there's zero data in the crash. Connecticut Crash Repository indicating that there've been any accidents at that location under the current configuration. Um, we have just chip sealed the road, so there is no stop bar. Um, so now would be the ideal time to do it. Um, if we were going to change the location. Um, the only thing I would suggest is that. One of the ways that you can make it, make it obvious, which is the burden inside the sign with the stop sign. Is to do a center line through the intersection and just not include that leg. That makes it fairly clear when you're driving. You know, who's got right of way over hoop. So I would suggest doing that. And I would also suggest, just actually, right now it's a, an unmarked crosswalk. I would convert that to a marked crosswalk. Um, since, you know, that just gives it a little extra visibility.
Both ways? I thought last time we talked about this, we're gonna put another stop sign in.
Well, so originally you were gonna move the stop sign and then you wanted to talk about. Whether you should move it or whether you should add an additional one. Um, so that's. You know, I'm the local traffic authority designate, you guys are the local traffic authority. So the only thing. I can give you is what I gave you in that uh. That uh letter I sent you. Um, Anne was correct, I had the roads backwards. I just reordered the slides in. Um, so, the, the first. Uh, one shows the existing stop sign. And the next picture shows the. The uh sightline coming from the other directions and then the last couple show the crosswalk itself. So at this point. You know, it's just a question of you guys at the last meeting indicated that you were gonna go drive it or walk it and look at it. So uh it's. It's up for your discussion.
I can give you my thoughts if you want.
You live there, let's go.
I took, I took a good look at this and um. I agree with Eric, I think we need to mark the crosswalk going across. Replace the stop sign on Wood Fern with a yield to pedestrian sign. Coming up Dogwood up to the crosswalk, we put a yield to pedestrian sign. Shadow coming up to the intersection, we put a stop sign. And I think that would be problem solved. Because that, that, that road going, it's, it's basically Dogwood to Shadow, Dogwood to Wood Fern is basically a continuous street. And I think if we just marked the crosswalk with the yield to pedestrians and we put a stop sign on. Shadow, I think it would be, I think that's probably the best thing to do. Just from looking at it and from my standpoint.
Right, Anne, you live there, are you okay with that?
Yes, that sounds good.
Scott, any issue?
Oh, I, I went up there, that sounds like it will work, yeah.
Okay.
It's similar to what we did down at the lake, where with lake, was it, was it Lakeside Drive?
Right.
Crosswalk there and you got the signs and.
Or Island Street.
Yeah, whatever that street is, we have the crosswalk, ought to go over to the racks for the kayaks. Just do something similar to that and you'd be fine.
Eric, did you write that down?
So you want yield pedestrian signs? On Dogwood?
Wood Fern, so just marking the crosswalk.
And Wood Fern.
And then we just put a stop sign on Shadow coming up. So we allowed flow, flow of traffic along Dogwood to Wood Fern and that vice versa going straight. Then we just put the stop sign on Shadow. We just moved the stop sign.
Is that where people come from? Because, to me, it seems like, why would somebody drive all the way around? If they're going to Wood Fern. Why would they go up Dogwood to get to Wood Fern? You know, if the majority of traffic is coming directly up from Route Six. It seems like they're gonna take the first road to get it, not the second.
Take the first road, you just hit the stop sign, that's it. I mean, at the top, you just. I mean, it's a T intersection, right? You figure it's a T intersection.
Yeah, it's a T intersection.
You know, when I go there, I don't really see it as a T intersection. It feels like kind of a Y. I mean, I see what you're saying, but I see the majority of traffic. You know, that's going to. Wood Fern. You know, is coming up. Uh, Shadlow, not Dog. But I mean, I don't live there, you know?
No, honestly, when I come home from work from East Hartford, I go up Andy and then I come down, I go up Dogwood. Straight through.
But li- listen, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a resident of that. Street, but. Those two were, were, Dogwood and Wood Fern run into each other, right? It's just one road, I mean, I don't even know how they.
Just to the yield to pedestrians on that, just like we do on the rail trail crossings, anything else, I would just treat that as a contiguous road.
So, if somebody, somebody wanna make the motion to get that done?
Are you gonna make me repeat that?
Well, I'm, I'll make a motion to put a stop sign on into Shadlow. And a yield for pedestrians coming up. Dogwood with a pedestrian crosswalk on Dogwood. That good at Jeff Murray?
That's fine with me, if that gets this problem solved, it gets it off our agenda.
I don't know. Doesn't look like a Y to me. Looks like a T.
It's a T.
It's a T.
It's a T.
It's a.
It's a T. Okay, uh so it was seconded by Anne. Uh further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Let's move on. So now we're gonna move on to item twelve, approval of minute meetings. I'll make a motion that we approve the eight one twenty twenty four special. Minute meetings, eight one twenty twenty four public hearing minutes, eight one twenty twenty four special town minute. Uh meeting minutes. The eight twelve twenty four regular meeting minutes and the nine twenty three twenty twenty four special meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion, any changes anybody wants to make to those minutes? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Uh, the treasurer's report was included in our packet. Anybody have any questions related to any of the information through August twenty twenty four?
So, I do have one thing related to the treasurer's report. Uh, I apologize, it did not get in the packet. And that is the treasurer uh. Asked that both the board and of selectmen and Board of Finance. Be uh explicitly on board with her working remotely. Um, for the period of time when she normally goes to Florida uh for the winter. Um, the Board of Finance uh unanimously agreed that, that they were fine with it. They didn't have any objection to that. I did wanna raise that same point with the Board of Selectmen to make sure, she just wanted to make sure you all didn't have any issues. And you were aware that she intended to do that again.
I'll make a motion that we allow the treasurer to work remotely during. The period of her Florida. Vacation, her, her time in Florida. Uh, uh, now I'll revise that. I guess I'm gonna make a motion, the town treasurer can work remotely. As approved by the town administrator.
Second that.
Right, further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
So, at, at the last meeting, you. Uh, asked me to verify that the payments. Um, to spring were in fact the insurance. Um, and I did, and it is. So I think that was the, the question you had opened up outstanding from the last meeting.
Okay, so from the transactions that were done in July. Spring was a large amount and you were telling us it was insurance and in fact it was insurance.
Correct.
Okay, um. I'm gonna give you on the balance sheet. For August sits on page uh one eleven. The stiff account sits at four million, three sixty six.
Correct.
Has there been any discussion between the town treasurer and the board of, um, I'll talk to Celeste? Obviously, that's a lot. Um, it would be very beneficial if, if some additional funds were pushed over to this difficult. To generate as much interest as we possibly can before the Fed cuts the rates and it starts to decrease, but it's still better than nothing. So I'll sit there and I'll address that separately. Okay, um, anybody have any questions related to the treasurer's report?
So, related to the stiff account. We do, what the treasurer's trying to do is basically keep roughly eight hundred thousand dollars somewhere in that. In our. You know, the, the checking account we actually use. And put everything else she has the authority of in stiff. So. We are on a monthly or a weekly basis transferring money back and forth between the town and stiff to maximize the amount that's in there. And minimize the amount that's kept in M and T.
And maybe you'll know this and maybe you won't, but um, there were two. Checks for Andover Elementary in August, was that because July was not cut timely?
Uh, that would. Probably be the case. Where do you see that? You're looking in the check register?
Yep. Uh, you have a transaction on eight five.
Yep.
The transaction on eight fourteen. So I would just like clarification on that and if, if the amounts aren't being paid timely, they need to be paid timely and if they're. You know, if we've moved more money than we should over there, I would like to sit there and move it to the stiff account.
I, I believe it was not paid in July. They waited, it was in August, they got two months worth.
Okay.
Like in August.
Eric, if you can sit there and verify that and there's someone waiting to be let in, if you can let them in, that would be great. And, and I would assume just for everybody's knowledge, so like if we move to this tax collector's report, um. You know, on page one twenty, it shows that we collected two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in the month of August, but if we went to the month of July, we probably collected upwards of two point five million dollars. Uh, collecting all of the real estate, the property taxes and all the car taxes. So July is always our biggest month. And I'm assuming the majority of those dollars, when available, were moved into the stiff account to start earning interest.
Correct.
Okay, um.
So we seem to hover somewhere between two million and four million in this stiff account, depending on where we are in the tax collection cycle.
And so, at some point in time in the month of July, we had returned checks from residents to the total of nine thousand three hundred ninety two dollars and ninety four cents. Okay. So that lowered our two hundred and eighty four thousand dollars to two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars and I'm assuming that that got added back into our receivables so that we. Know where we're at. Okay, anybody else have any questions on the tax collector's report or any of the information provided by the tax collector? Uh, I'll ask one question. Have we decided anything, uh Eric, on um? Delinquent taxes and where the tax collector is at with that?
Uh, I don't have an answer for you right now. So the answer would be no. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Uh, you saw on page one forty seven, there are one. Five, six, a total of seven tax refunds uh for a total of four hundred ninety five dollars and three cents.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the. Tax refunds for a total of four hundred ninety five dollars and three cents dated nine five twenty twenty four.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Um, I'm sorry, did everybody vote? I was looking at the paperwork. Everybody good? All four, four nothing? Excellent. Okay, um. Department reports. Senior Transportation, Kathy Palazzi, thank you very much. Uh, she's not even on anymore. She's left for the, she left, she left the building. Uh, again, anyone that sees Kathy Palazzi should thank her for all the hard work and everything she's done for the community for all these years. It's a. Her, her level of volunteerism and, and her, her husband Mike's is. Is greatly appreciated. And so, make sure you say thank you to him when you see him. All right, assessor's office. Transportation. Anybody have any questions on anything related to this? The, the building department? Anybody have any questions on the Department of Public Works information provided in the packet?
One thing I do have, Jeff, that I wanted to mention is. It seems like these, these sales of, of surplus equipment at the public works buildings are not going through the town clerk for bids. They're going to public works in Eric, which they should be going to the town clerk. I feel that's the proper protocol that we should be following. And for some reason, we're not doing that for the sale of the tractor and I believe the truck.
Eric, where are those bids?
I don't believe we've actually received a bid yet. So I think it's. Kind of irrelevant.
Relevant because they should be going to the town clerk like all.
Well, Jeff, we haven't received any, so that's, that's no problem. If we, when we get them, can we make sure that they get to the town clerk's office and at least get recorded in? Because at, at least that way they can get stamped and dated and, and everybody can be happy that they're all good.
Yes, Jay and I are both on board with that and we have every intention of doing.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, the library report, anybody questions related to the library? No? Okay, um. Uh, it's very nice to sit there and see uh the Tess is the, the. Community Center um, uh Director, um Senior Center. I love. All of the documentation that she's providing and uh. Hopefully, she's getting that out. How are you assisting her, Eric, to make sure that she gets this out to all the residents as best we can? Facebook, email, um.
Um, so, you know, we're kinda still discussing the best way to do that. Um, we've sat down and had uh gone through webinars and gotten proposals from two vendors. Um, for. Essentially automating a lot of the processes of check in and schedule. Um, so, as you know, we use Civic for our communications platform and our website. Uh, they have a, a package. That will give us most of the functionality we want for the senior center and the rec center and to manage the senior transportation. Um, it's pretty expensive. Um, we've also looked at what the majority of, of. Uh, senior centers in the area use, which is a program called My Senior Center. That's probably what we're gonna recommend to the board, I don't think we've made a final determination yet. Um, and then the question becomes, if we do recommend that, what, what I would suggest is we use their. Uh, so they have two options, they have one option that's completely free of advertising. And they have another option that we allow them to place advertising on the main login screen. At the senior center, that lowers our cost by about four thousand the first year. Um, and then, um, so, so basically if we did that. We would be looking at about a four thousand dollar upfront cost to implement this. And about a two thousand dollar cost per year to maintain this and this seems to be the package that. The majority of senior centers are using. Um, and I suspect that's gonna be our recommendation.
Okay, that's a, that's a something different from what I'm after, um. Diane Granier, you're on, you're on the phone call, uh, you're on the phone call, you're on the meeting, um, can you sit there and take some time and spend with Tess? To share, uh, potentially, um. Uh, ways to get the email addresses for, you know. Your, your dear Diane letter was a huge hit and it really did help get information out to a lot of the community. Um, back before you gave it up when you thought we got a little bit better with our town website. But these things that Tess is sitting there doing, the yoga, the food chair and the different events, if you could sit there and work with her potentially to. Distribute that to as many of our neighbors as possible to get as many people participating in these types of events. That would be greatly appreciated.
Be happy to do that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks Diane.
Tell me, what, what are her hours, is she? At the town hall? Eight to five or what's?
Uh, community center. Figure you can get her between nine and three roughly most days at the community center.
Okay.
Right. And that would be great Diane, because the distribution of those types of activities to improve participation by, um. All of our residents would be great. And, and, and it's something that I need to get with Tess and also get Tess to get with, uh, and this is something that you might be able to do to get with. Um, PTA and the school to allow her to sit there and access. Um, uh, the parents as much as possible to get children to participate in. All, all the different types of activities that are available, whether they're available within Andover, they're available within Hebron and, and the RAM. Uh, community, um, we just need to do a better job of, of. Getting that information out, so, and if you could sit there and also work with her on, on the school side, that would be great because. You know, um. I'm a big believer that, that some of it is that people don't know about it and some of it is that they just need to continuously be reminded, I mean. Uh, it's just the same thing of doing, you know, um. Little kid basketball and just trying to get them to come together, I mean, we have. A growing school population, we should get as many of those children to participate as we possibly can, um.
You might wanna also, um, check with the library, they do a lot of, um. Programs and things.
That would be great, if we could consolidate as many of the groups within the community as possible to allow Tess to reach out through, um. Those, those entities, it would just help us build more community involvement.
Is she doing stuff with kids too?
She's assisting within the recreation department, her job is to assist within the recreation programs to sit there and get. People to participate and to organize those and she's, she's, she's responsible for the field, she's responsible for the scheduling of the, the gymnasium. And working with the principal and the superintendent on those items, but yeah, her job is. Crosses not only the seniors and what they're doing, but she crosses over into youth sports and youth activities and. You know, we finally have someone that. Is going to focus on it and what we need to do is get them as much of the information to reach out to the community as possible.
Right. But I also want to say that what I asked Tess to do. Is to focus number one on senior transportation and make sure that transitions smoothly. Number two, work on the senior programming. Um, and get as much of that up and running as we can. And then transition to adding community events and recreation. I don't think we can expect her to do everything right out of the gate, I think that's gonna be a, you know, a few months down the line.
I kind of disagree with that Eric in a sense that she's doing all of these great flyers and I don't care. For what event, it should go out to everybody, what I'm asking is to have the rest of the community get involved to build the database of the email addresses. To sit there and try to allow people to understand what is up, because not everybody walks into the town hall and looks on the board. Or walks into community center and looks on the board for those types of activities. And I'm just recommending that we use resources like Diane and resources like the PTA and resources like the library. To sit there and give Tess the vehicle, uh, even if it's just an email Eric, even if it's just an email database. To sit there and, and execute, hey, listen, we're doing yoga and we have forty open spots, come fill them. And it would. It's just, it's not, I'm not asking for her to do a lot of extra effort, she's already done all these beautiful flyers. I'm asking for ways to execute and get them out to the community, so.
I mean, the first thing would be to just. Continue to get people to sign up for the community alerts. Because anybody that's willing to sign up for the community alerts, we can get information too. But the majority of town residents do not ever sign up. Um, and don't really have any interest in signing up, that's, that's the problem.
Well, that's in community, emails are different issue.
I have a question about all this information that's in the packet that maybe Tess put in. She, did she develop these herself or did she like poach them from other towns? Um, I found a lot of conflicts in them when I was reading through them.
She's using templates and she's probably just creating them off of a template, so if there's, there's text issues, then you should communicate directly to her.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I found the town of Ellington listed it here.
Yeah, I mean, look, nobody creates everything from whole cloth. I mean, everybody nicks forms from other towns, so we have specific areas where there.
Eric, that's okay, and I appreciate that if you find in some issues, please reach out to Tess and ask her to sit there and do that. Um, I don't even know if these have gone out, I mean, the only one I know that, I know that's gone out is the yoga one. Because Kathy Pelosi sat there and said she did it, so and if you have issues, if you have issues with any.
Yeah, one big thing, she's got a thing in here about COVID that. About executive orders that took place in twenty twenty that only were good for six months. You know, that's a major one that she needs to take out.
Alright.
Most of these forms haven't gone out to the public yet.
That's good.
What she wanted to do was get your feedback. And certainly the waiver and all that stuff has to go to the town's attorney. Before it goes, but right now Dennis is kind of overloaded, so I'm waiting on submitting some of that stuff to Dennis.
You point out my things.
Yeah, that'd be great, and then Diane, when you get a chance, that would be great, thank you.
Uh, just one thing I would suggest, if you look at Hebron, when I lived in Rocky Hill, they used to just put out a, like a spring. Calendar or like a catalog of all the activities that were going on in the spring, you got a summer, a fall and a winter. You just put it out on the website with everything on there and who to contact for each. Activity and, and just doing that in a PDF format, it's like eight or ten pages. That works better than these individual flyers because they're gonna get lost if it's just a master catalog, master flyer works much better.
Let's, let's work toward that.
If I can just comment on that, um, when we went from the this and that, which was, you know, email right into your inbox. Versus the website, the big complaint was. They have to go do something now, they have to go to the website and they have to click those buttons. Where with the this and that, what they liked was the email came right to their inbox, they didn't have to do anything. And people are basically lazy, um, so you have to spoon feed them and. So putting it on the website, i- it's, it's a good place, it should be everywhere, but, um, I think into their email is, um. The best way to get to people directly. I'll talk to Tess.
Thank you.
But we also don't. I mean, as a town, we typically only email blast. Those people who actually signed up to get the information. Like, I know if somebody sends me unsolicited stuff. I send them back nasty grants and say, please take me off your list.
That's what happens when you're cranky.
True.
Listen, I'm, I'm not, this is not a final group of, of decisions, it's just, these are, these are.
Ideas.
These to sit there and help Tess be as, as productive in her job as we possibly can, it's a new position. Any of the help is, is, is positive, Diane, please just go talk to her, it would be greatly appreciated by me personally. Because I know the value that you can sit there and, and bring to her in her job. And Anne, you feel free to go talk to her and talk to her about any of the information that's in there.
Just one last comment, the this and that list had seven hundred email addresses on it and th- they were all. You had to contact me to get on the list, they, they were not unsolicited.
You talk to me, you talk to me after and we'll sit there and, and try to sit there and see what we can do.
We'll work it out.
Yes, right, we'll just work together, so anybody else on any of the other issues that are here? No, okay. Let's keep going, what other, what other? That was it, so she was, Tess was the last one that was in here. Okay. Is that accurate Eric or did I miss any of the other reports, because when I looked through them?
Uh, no, I mean, I guess the question is, you know, Anne said there were some specific things. Uh, she wanted changed or had concerns about them.
She can deal directly with Tess, don't.
Perfect.
Not important to go through in the meeting. Okay, um. Anybody have any other issues on any of the departments? Alright, E- Eric, any correspondence?
No, nothing significant.
Let's, let's do public speak so that we can sit there and, and move forward, so, um, Rachel Bowman.
Yes. I do endorse Stephen King as a representative for the board selectmen.
Alright, thank you very much, uh, Diane Granier.
Thank you.
I'm all set, thank you.
Alright, Steve Willard.
All set, thanks Jeff.
Uh, Joseph Godwin.
Uh, just real quick, uh, I did submit, um, a PDF version of the town charter. I know there's a lot of, uh, revisions that are looking to be made in November. Um, and one thing I noticed was getting into the website, it was kind of hard to, to navigate through the town charter. Uh, so I went through the document, refreshed it with, uh, hyperlinks and just making it easier to navigate. And that's something that, you know, I want to look at trying to do for, uh, some of the other documents for the town. Uh, a- and again, this is separate from, from anything else, so. Uh, if you guys have feedback for me, a- and if I can be helpful with that, just let me know. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Stephen King.
I just want to thank everyone for the endorsements, uh, um, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to, uh. Uh, be a part of this and, uh, um. Thank, uh, Joe Godwin for his, uh, service. And, uh, if there's anything IT related that, uh, I can help with as well, uh, that's what I do, that's what I've done for the past forty years. Be happy to help out any way I can.
Alright, thank you, Shayna Laden.
Thanks everyone, um, I just wanted to say that while you're also speaking to Dennis. If you have any questions about the tri board policy, I've spent months drafting it and redrafting it. So please ask me the questions, um, two things, I know Eric pointed out. Um, many questions to the board of finance, um, they've now addressed that and hopefully will be considering the policy themselves. At their September meeting, uh, the board of education has already passed the policy. So then we would pass along for the board's selectments, hopeful final consideration. The only thing I'll say is that the policy was. Came out of the ideas from the tri board meeting. And the whole purpose is to avoid in the future having any issues with capital projects. At Andover Elementary School and the surrounding property, so. It is a compromise in that I believe that the board of education is giving up our legal rights. And Eric pointed out to the board of finance that they would be giving up some of their rights pursuant to the charter and whatnot. But again, it's a compromise so that hopefully all three boards are working together, so we don't in the future have any of those issues, thanks.
Alright, thank you, Wayne Casasik.
Yeah, I'd just like to throw my support to Stephen King and, uh. I know this isn't, this isn't the forum, but, um. I do have concerns about the, uh, modifications to the, uh, town charter and. What appears to be a power grab by the selectmen. Thank you.
Alright, Leanne Hutchinson.
Nothing, thank you.
Alright. Um, the individual listed as owner.
Yeah, that's, that's me Jeff, it's Liz Lowkett, I'm, I'm all set, thank you so much.
Okay. Uh, phone number ending in five, four, seven, nine.
It's Leanne, again, that's probably me, five, four, seven, five.
Yep, it is.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Carol, do you have anything you want to add?
All sets, thank you.
Alright, Joanne Ebert.
Thank you Jeff, yep, I have a couple comments that I want to make after listening. Um, I just wanted to clarify my public speak from earlier. So thank you Jeff Murray for pointing it out, I was definitely thrilled to be endorsed. After I put my, you know, came to meetings, got my face out there, did a lot of things and, and obviously. Um, tried to be a candidate on board of finance and was endorsed by the Republican Party, which I loved, I loved all their support. Everything was great with that, but I just wanted to point out that I was an unaffiliated voter. Who started going to meetings again after being very involved in the town. You know, ten years prior when we moved here, then I took a little lapse, so it was kind of funny when Adrian said that. I, you know, wasn't unknown and I'm like, well, I've been involved, so anyways, moving on from that, just want to make that perfectly clear from my mouth. The other thing that I wanted to publicly do for this person because she has been present at many, many meetings. That I've been involved in or watched is Shannon Loudon and she just kind of spoke to it herself, but I want her to get the credit. That is due for all the time and effort and, um. Really a lot of attention to detail, coming to meetings, answering questions and being available to answer questions at various meetings. I know we didn't take advantage of asking her the questions during an important part. You know, that kind of hurts my feelings for her because we will ask certain people but not others, but that's been observed in the town. I have no hard feelings about that either, but Shannon deserves her, her flowers on this one because she's been everywhere, so I want that to be said. Um, the other thing is, um, you all were just talking about ideas that we can. Um, use to get the word out. And, you know, emails or different things with our new, um, so proud of our new community and senior center. Um, where I work, Manchester Public Schools, we. A while ago changed our whole email system to Gmail and the Google system, which has been great for us. And I think, um. You know, however you want to do it, I know that the town of Andover has, um, Outlook. Um, which we previously had, but once we came on board with Gmail. And, uh, Google, it allowed so many things to happen and I would personally be in, happy. To anybody that doesn't know how it operates as far as sharing documents, getting documents out there, signing up. Creating documents, having other people be able to edit the document, it's just been a great thing, I was really opposed at the beginning just because. Everybody at work gets used to things, um, I think it could work wonders for what you're trying to do, I think it'll involve. You know, tests reaching out to people to, to gather those email addresses. I know that Eric, and this is, you know, the way that he operates and this is his personality that I've observed, you know, he doesn't like those emails. But people do like receiving emails because they do not have to go out for the information such as Jeff said. So Google Gmail would work. So Google Gmail would work great for the town. People could sign up. Things could be shared. There could be groups made. I mean, I'd be all over that to help out if, if it's ever needed. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Renee Lenziri.
Nothing for me at this time. Thanks.
All right. Uh, did I miss anyone? Did I not give anyone a opportunity to speak? Okay. All right, everybody. Thank you very much. Um, I make a, a motion, item. Item seventeen A Executive Session. I'll make a motion that we move into Executive Session and Jeff, I'm assuming, do we have anyone that we need to invite into Executive Session?
I'd like the Board of Selectmen members and the town attorney present, please. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So the motion is Executive Session with the members of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Attorney. Am I going to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor? Eric, can you, can you transfer the ownership of this to me?
Uh, so as far as I know, you are co-host. So, but I certainly can, uh,
just because I'm over eighty.
Okay, we're coming out of Executive Session at nine fifty. Um, I don't believe there's any, uh, business in front of us, uh, except, uh, item eighteen. So I make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Jeff Murray seconded all those. All right. Thank you very much. So we're leaving our meeting at nine fifty. I'll let Eric name. All right. Thank you, guys.
All right, good night. Good night.